Agenda today. Here we go, I need to move our segmenter. Council Lake, Council Wither. Then we do now approve the agenda for Monday, May thirteen twenty two, as a survey and amended on favor. Thank you. And the declarations of interest today. Here in that. I have a motion in the council hereby does manage the area we have council held in as well as the close me if council held on Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four, so clear amended move by. Council Wither is going to make council, you can hear errors or missions in those minutes. Here in that call question on favor. Very, thank you. So there's been some, some stuff around town around delegations, I just want to remind that the public that anybody wants to come to municipal council has to reach out to the town staff through the clerk or deputy clerk. Make a request to come and have delegation to council for any issue that you might have a concern in the community. Also, this is a formal, formal delegation, she has to command and have to address the council and get about a ten minute period of time that you can address councils, not a debate period, it's just to address council. On the concerns you might have in regards to some of the things which happening within the community that you feel there's something you've brought to the council table. This council has been always transparent, open in regards to their council meetings and discussions with the committee, we've also. We closed off prior to the new council getting appointed was we used to have an open house every, every council meeting from six thirty to seven to address. Any issues within the community, but moving the businesses that we supply forward. We didn't, we cancel that process because we weren't having anybody come and talk to us about any issues within the community, so we felt that we were appropriately opening the door to the municipality and the members within the community. When nobody was addressing the municipality and government, the local council. We decided to stop that process, we always been over the transparent council, we want to make sure that people fully aware that the delegation process is fully available to anybody in the community. Come and talk to your council at any time, just reach out to the supposed staff to the clerk or deputy clerk and you can have that set up at the following council meetings. Thank you. Stun Gals reports, Council Christian.
So our Falcons are gearing up for their first soccer sports day where they'll be going to Wawa this Wednesday, May fifteenth. Playing the N triple S double A semifinals against Chapo and Wawa, so it should be a. Good sports day and a lot of Falcons, including myself, are excited for the opening of the golf course.
I seen you on North West News last night, Council Christian, in regards to something about youth, youth involvement, youth education impersonations commission can give maybe something to highlight on that.
Oh, so there was a agreement that Superior Greenstone went in with a number of different communities and there were the, like the signing of the agreement happened in my home community at Beat the Gun where. Basically, there's agreement where the school board would have to approach the communities for any changes to the curriculum. That affects their own, like their own kids from the community, so instead of like. An afterthought going to them after the changes are made, they get to put input before the changes are made, so they could get that perspective.
Awesome, I see you did very well, so thanks for that as well.
Our graduates are starting their fundraising yesterday on Mother's Day. We had a number of students volunteer at the Mother's Day branch of the Legion where we raised over a hundred and sixty dollars. And coming up, we have a bottle drive after the May long weekend, so.
Good timing.
Good timing, thank you for that much, and we will highlight some of your activities at normal when we get into that part of the agenda, so. I think we look forward to hearing what your thoughts are as well. Up next, we have a report on domestic foul, that was Mr. Scorchance who's going to give us a highlight on, on that, please.
So at the regular meeting of council held on September twelfth, twenty twenty two, council directed administration. To research and brings forward a report as it relates to allowing backyard chickens in residential zoned our one areas. As part of a review of the animal control by law. At the regular meeting of council on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Administration presented the results of a public consultation process on the matter. Comments from the Fundary District Health Unit and presented options for council to consider. On presentation of the administration report, council directed administration to undertake a domestic file pilot project. Subsequent to council's approval, the municipality's bylaw enforcement officer resigned. This departure reduced the amount of resources internally to undertake this particular project. Administration further advised council that this resignation would impact administration's ability to complete the work required for the pilot project. This matter was deferred to a further date and has yet to proceed. Administration has recently received a public complaint regarding illegal domestic file in a residential area. And therefore has revisited this subject as part of the current review, administration has reviewed this matter with legal counsel. Based on municipal by law seventeen eighty eight, keeping of domestic level on any residential property within a residential dwelling is clearly prohibited. Another concern that has gained prominence in the United States and Canada recently is the growing prevalence of avian flu. While the risk to human health remains low, avian flu is a type of influenza and can be contracted by humans. There is growing concern that this type of virus could mutate into other strains which could ultimately pass through human to human contact. An article published in the Montreal Gazette on May the ninth, twenty twenty four outlines this type of scenario. With comment from Dr. Donald Vin, an infectious disease specialist and medical microbiologist at the McGill University Health Center. At the current time, administration does not have the resources to develop and define a pilot project for domestic file in residential areas. Therefore, administration is recommending that the municipality not pursue this project any further. And if council wishes to revisit it, that it be done when the official plan and comprehensive zoning by law are reviewed starting in twenty twenty five. There are no financial implications and there are no options with this report and administration is presenting this report for council's information in further direction.
Well, thank you for that unbriefed report, I would open the floor up for discussion, Council Lake.
Yeah, I mean, it's disappointing, certainly. Not that I want chickens, but I can certainly understand people wanting to have them for lots of reasons, I think. You know, with the price of food, it's, it's through security, there's, there's some good lessons there, I think, for people around their own food. I understand that we don't have the capacity, especially under by law officer left, I'm, I'm wondering. What are the options, like if, if it's not allowed in residential areas? Is it allowed under any other zoning areas? And what would that look like if we made those changes? So I'm just kind of, what, wondering, like, like clearly, if we don't have the capacity, we don't have the capacity, and I can live with that, that's not a no forever, that's a no for right now. But I'm just looking for other.
So a very good question, so it's currently allowable in rural zoned areas within the municipality. Which there are a number that we have, but none are inhabited by residential areas. So the best way to define that, if we look at it on a go forward basis, is. To relook at how we define resident, or pardon me, rural zoned in the new OP and the new zoning by law. So really, the way to envision it is most of our rural area is, you know, external of our built up urban area. So you can have domestic follow there and you don't necessarily need to have a residence to do that. But it'd be easier for us through the OP and zoning by law process to delineate that. Through that single window approval, as opposed to try and deal with it on a zoning by law one off.
And I joined you up in that too, so municipality Marathon has followed is within encompassing of the municipality in general, our common area. And we got a bigger, you know, wider range, which is the crown land within our municipal boundaries. So the government has agreed that through the ministry that they're going to look at opening up the car lab for future development, so I think Mr. Scorchance can identify clearly that. Under the official plan of zoning amendment and by law update in twenty twenty five, that could be hopefully be resolved from the internal government so that we can open up the crown land for sale and development. Not only just, you know, domestic foul, but other developments within that crown land, because we can't just say somebody go up. For example, Shackley Road or Penlake, Old Hare Bay roads, you go build a place because it's crown land, it's not our land, we only have the municipal boundaries, right, to deal with. So just something to be, be aware of, Council Lake.
Yeah, and I would say, I think there's lots and lots of books have said, I would love to have a, an acre of land and, and, you know, horses or cows or whatever. And I think we are really vulnerable to food insecurity, if those highways close. There are no food sources, we had a pig farm at Penlake in the fifties. There's a, I think, a running farm sometimes in Heron Bay. But if, if there was a process by which people could get their hands on that, I do think. That some food security is a good idea, and certainly, everybody loves. Raising domestic foul unless it's your neighbor, right, and that's, that's the challenge of backyard chickens, so I think. That's a nice process, that feels like a fair compromise where people can still have it, but it's not going to have those issues of residents and, and especially contact with humans that's something they want to live, so. It certainly would, I think that would lay a lot of people's unhappiness to, knowing there's a path for it.
And I think the other important note, you know, it's been ten years since we, we've updated our OP and zoning by law, which is the regulation, but. As, as part of that, this review going forward, there is a public consultation process, so. It provides that avenue for us to gain public input and then be able to utilize that public input to actually design the plan and the zoning itself. Whereas, you know, issues like, you know, the cost of food and food security, you know, ten years ago wasn't even on the radar. So it's certainly a consideration that, you know, we can build into the theme of the plan, we look to roll up the public consultation.
Yeah, I think those would be good things to add.
Council speaking. Yeah, I just want to piggyback on, on Council Lake's comments and then also just highlights, been a ticket item for now for, for over a year. Whenever we decide, right, we'll receive some pushback on that. Just looking to administration, is there any possibility of like, or have you already looked into expanding the process with any third party consultants or consulting with other municipalities comparable to Marathon? That have existing bylaws for domestic by law.
Yeah, we've done a lot of research and I'll be completely honest, ninety nine percent that have tried any type of pilot project have failed. Due to either zoning issues, lawsuits, as an example, and my neighbor hasn't, I don't think that. The only areas that we found in Ontario where it's worked successfully are in farming type rural zone areas in southwestern Ontario. So that's why I say you're looking at as part of our OP and zoning by law review, under the lens of. Public input and looking at rural areas. Other, as an example, you know, we may have areas within the municipality that are zoned, you know, enterprise. That maybe we look at the zoning world to allow for this type of project, so it's not located in a residential area, but it is allowable. But our, our research has mostly said that municipalities that have taken this on, it's been highly unsuccessful and most have not taken it on. Yeah, so this is one thing that I get, one of the major things I get asked about almost probably once a week, for and against. I do think it's something that we should look at in our official plan when we review that, but. I agree that chickens, if it's going to be done, it has to be done right, and if, if now is not the right time, we don't have the resources, I agree that we should, we should wait because. Like you say, I think it'd be way more complaints about chickens and backyard chickens and animals and bears and all that stuff than people expect right now, so I, I'm in favor of waiting.
Yeah, so, so for summary, I think everything's been addressed, we, we've talked about this for quite a long time, probably a year and a half, actually, we've been discussing this very type of issue. They suggest for administration makes sense to look at the official plan, just a quick highlight, and I, I bought a cottage up of an older gentleman who used to raise chickens out of Cedar Lake. And he stopped raising chickens because it attracted too much wildlife, so there's also that factor with the fox and the wolf. So there's lots of other things you have to consider, so I think you'll, the official plan is, is the place we look at it. That there's opportunities that we can have some area within municipal boundaries to address for that type of operation, and we can certainly do that, so that will all be addressed in twenty twenty five under the. Municipal Act and legislation, so we're good to go that way if council agrees to that, Council Lake.
Yeah, and, and maybe just for those folks that are interested, I think, I can think of some people that want to do beekeeping as well, which I also think would probably work better away from residences. What's the timeline if we're doing the official plan and looking at agriculture as a, as a kind of pathway, when, what are the benchmarks that people could sort of be thinking about in terms of timelines?
Yeah, so realistically, we'll, we'll write the terms of reference this fall. Go out for RFP early twenty twenty five with council approval in the budget. Start, the very first piece will be a review of the current plan as well as public consultation process. Depending on the length and the scope of the changes within the plan, generally nine months to a year for final approval. You know, but this is something, you know, we could look at as a one off in, in the plan itself. You know, and, and maybe, you know, one way for us to look at it, you know, if there are other interests outside of just domestic file in rural zone areas. You know, is to look at it, you know, cooperative type approach.
That's what I was wondering.
Where there's, there's a fit for multiple users as opposed to, to one, so.
That makes sense to me a lot, I think cultural co-op kind of thing.
So, so I think for the, for the information for the public, we've all agreed as a council that we think there's an opportunity for the felt, domestic felt to be raised within our community, we just don't want to be. Aggressive and putting into the wrong part of our community, which is the neighborhood, and somebody, you know, one person is enjoying it, sixty other people are not. So that's, that's something you have to be considering, you know, and I'm sure that the one or two people who want them are going to be really upset that this timeline has been pushed back again. But that's reality, we're looking for the best inches of all residents in our community, so we'll all agree to the goal to the official plan, there's only by law amendments and changes starting twenty twenty five. Is that a fair assessment? With the information provided for administration? Good, thank you very much, we'll move on to the next item, which is a report on the twenty twenty four tax ratios, Mr. Verbal, good evening.
Evening Mayor and Council. Section three oh eight of the municipal act requires that single tier municipalities pass a bylaw each year to establish the tax ratios for the taxation year. Section three one three prescribes tax reductions for vacant and excess lands in commercial and industrial tax classes. Tax ratios established relative tax burden for each property class. Council has the authority to adopt alternative ratios as long as they fall within the provincial ranges of fairness. Which is for municipal, sorry, multi residential, one point zero to one point one, and for all other classes, zero point six to one point one. Since our ratios fall outside these ranges of fairness, we can only move closer towards these ranges. Historically, the province has provided another option in utilizing revenue neutral transaction ratios to mitigate tax shifts amongst the classes. Due to the province's assessment referral, revenue neutral ratios are not permitted for twenty twenty four. Administration is proposing no changes to the tax ratio. So as always, residential is one, multi res, including the new multi residential construction is one point one. Commercial is one point two five. Parking lots or vacant lands, one point one, landfills, one point one, industrials, two point two five, and large industrial is two point six three. To illustrate the effective tasks ratios, assume a house and a business are both assessed to be worth one hundred thousand dollars. If the tax rate for the residential class is three percent, the homeowner would pay three thousand dollars in the municipal property tax. The business owner would pay three percent times the ratio of one point two five, coming out to three point seven five percent or three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in municipal property tax. With the overhaul of the property assessment, way back in nineteen ninety eight, the province recognized that not all properties classified in the commercial and industrial property classes. Were being occupied to the same extent. So it qualified two sub classes. Vacant land is property that has no accessible improvements, which are buildings. Excess land is property that has not been improved. And is in excess of the amount of land required to support the improved portions of the land. The ministry of finance prescribes tax reduction ratios, reduction percentages of thirty percent for commercial and thirty five percent for the industrial properties. In twenty seventeen, the province granted flexibilities to municipalities to alter the reduction program by altering. The discount outside the thirty to thirty five percent range or even eliminating them. The reduction of the vacant commercial properties was eliminated as a talent, Marathon has the optional tax class of vacant land. But excess commercial properties still receive a thirty percent reduction and vacant and excess industrial properties are given thirty five percent reductions. Changing the tax ratio doesn't generate more tax revenue. Shifts the tax burden amongst the classes, increasing the ratios will expose revenue to a higher risk of tax write offs. Options are to adopt by law twenty seventy seven and approve the ratios as presented or approve the by law with amendments. Administration is recommending that option A be selected, establishing the ratios as detailed in by law two zero seven seven.
Thanks for the report and any questions in regards to that, Mr. Wither.
Um, do we have any large industrial within Marathon at the moment?
There is. The hydro property, the suspension on the highway, and the, but that's in industrial.
Okay.
Only property in a large industrial would be Williams Mine.
Okay.
All the other ones like.
Would be considered industrial.
Would be industrial.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the mill used to be classified as well.
Yeah.
Council Suki.
I just have a question for, for clarity, so just for council having the authority to adopt alternative ratios. So is that saying we can plus or minus one to one point one for residential, plus or minus zero point six to one point one for the other task classes?
Yeah.
And yes.
Council Lake.
Yeah, we, we don't do a lot of, I mean, we do a lot of advocacy for the municipality, but this is one where I just, I've always felt like small. Single industry towns really gets screwed, like if you're living in, you know, Barry, and you've got a million industries, they divide that tax among them. Then we're here because of one industry, really, so to be limited to that. Top amount in large industrial really shifts all of the tax burden to a residence, it, it, it is the way it is, I get it. Is there an advocacy piece for asking for those laws to be changed? In terms of allowing, allowing single industry towns to act differently than, like that, if that tax law makes sense to me in a city. Right, where there's lots of industry, where there's only one.
But it all depends on which provincial government is in place and your whole philosophy on who should be paying for municipal services. So for example, back in ninety eight, when Mike Harris conservative property, but conservative government brought in these ratios. They said too many municipalities depend on commercial and industrial and multi res to pay for services that are mostly for residential.
But just to follow up, and I also said a common sense revolution at that time was to have everybody in the municipality pay the same amount of tax based on not assessed value. But the services that we provide with to those residents, which made sense, but never got any traction, so that was the common sense. Whether you live on that side of town or this side of town, we all use the same services, so you should be paying fair whether it's support affordability, so. The, 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 the act never got any traction, but he talked about changing it to that, so, Council Lake.
Is, is there a process by which we could make that argument, or is that? Do you, do you know what I mean, like I, I just think that there are lots of, I, I think of, you know, all the municipalities that have that one industry.
Well, it's only going to go back to the only one peer, this is tax, right, which would be the residential tax, so you could reduce, which, if you want to go back in historical values, so the mill used to pay five.
Yeah.
So they hated it because they, for every one dollar that the resident paid, the mill paid five dollars, so there was very little impact to the resident. A huge impact to the industry, but they were the only mill within the district that paid that, so then they would, they would argue all the time, we couldn't change it because reality, if we change it, we would literally double the homeowners tax rate. So we slowly brought it down to the range of fairness, as you see today, two point six three. It's still not where the government wants it to be, the government wants to be lower than that, but reality is we can't afford that.
And I get it for forestry because it's renewable, but when we're talking about mining, like that ore is going to be gone. And it, it seems to me that, and, and I know this is, maybe this is socialist, but that industry should pay more than all ours.
Council Scorchance, can you?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think it'd be very difficult to change the assessment act, you know, with respect to ratios. I think, you know, and it's something, you know, we've undertaken and we're going to be undertaking at AMO in partnership with Red Lake this year. Is looking at assessment of mining properties, because we don't feel they're assessed properly in Ontario. As an example, tailings ponds are assessed as bare land, right, so I think the, you know, the more sensible approach is to look at special purpose properties. On one offs, in an arse, it would be a gold mine on how they're assessed under the assessment act, as opposed to looking at, you know, changing ratios across zones.
That makes way more sense to me, thank you, and I'm glad to see that.
Yeah, those discussions have been ongoing, but impact is a, is a. Agency to deal with within, so, and, and so it was given on that discussion, so prior to going to that motion, I did, I skipped by the other motion on the domestic file, so. I just want to go back to that, so that council hereby accepts the attached important in recommendation from. Administration on domestic file and the resident chairs, and for that administration cease development of the pilot program until the official zoning bylaws are reviewed in twenty twenty five, move by. Council Lake, second, the council, any questions on that, sorry about that, I just skipped that one. All in favor? Very, thank you. Now we got a motion here in regards to the tax ratios, thank you for that, Mr. Verbal, appreciate it, I think all your questions are good. So that the council hereby accepts the attached report and the recommendation for twenty twenty four tax ratios, I heard that before by law be adopted later in this meeting. For the ratios of twenty twenty four detail, detailed in the report, move by. As a Suki, you said, my council, any questions to those? Here in that, I'll call question on favor. Very, thank you. Up next, we have a bit of highlight in the normal conference, I think, I think it's appropriate for letting our student counselors maybe highlight it first and see what their thoughts were, we could just summarize after. You've given us an overview of everything, you guys participated, so whoever wants to go first, Council Red, you ready?
Yeah. I was there for all three days, yeah. There's definitely a lot of people to speak in front of, a lot of pressure, but I got through it, and I feel like I got my point across. I also enjoyed the experience much more than I thought I would, it was a lot of sitting and listening, which to a lot of people my age doesn't seem the best thing I've ever. But I minded personally, I learned a lot, not only about the government as a whole, but also about the work that small communities do to look at for. Projects, the people that live inside of the communities and just their future plans to make it prosper.
Great, thank you, Council Christian.
I just thought it was a great all around experience to seeing all these municipalities come together and really connect with each other. And one of the things that I really liked was the fact that there was other student counselors there, you know, I thought it was really nice to see student counselors from all across Northern Ontario. And it was very nice to shit up, be able to share the, share the stage with them, as well as talk alongside them about the, like, future, future leadership, like being alongside future leaders like that, this really, was really nice, so.
Great, thanks, I, I'm glad you both enjoyed your experience, because it is a long process for two, two youth to sit through a lot of. Legal municipal governance jargon that probably didn't really sink in too much, but you, you've got the, the process under good, so it's really good, Council Lake.
Yeah, I would say that. You know, if we're feeding back to Noma, there was lots of duplication of presentations and I think sometimes less is more. I, I thought more time to our students would have been nice, I, I really. Did we post the, the video on, I think on our Facebook page? So people can go and watch Council Christian and Council Red speak, and it is, it is excellent, I thought it was, like you said, it was nice to see two other young folks and to see that program growing. But I do wonder about us, again, thinking about next year, really tasking our student counselors with maybe running that session and organizing it, because I think they're capable of it, and after having seen you on stage, I think. I would have rather listened to you than several of the things we went to. Other than that, it was nice to network and to see other municipalities, I'm reminded again and again that. Although we often complain about our community, and I think everybody does that, and we certainly take lots of complaints. Marathon remains the best place to live on the North Shore and probably all Northern Ontario, and that certainly came home from talking to the folks in the challenges.
Great, thanks, Council Wither.
Um, yeah, I'd like to start with saying how proud the two student counselors made me and should made everybody in Marathon proud, they, they did a really good job with their. Panel as well as they came up and asked questions to the ministers and the ministers forum and did a really good job by doing that, so that was, that was a great job. It's always good to be at Noma. Talking with fellow counselors from Northern Ontario to see, like, all of us all have the same issues or a lot of the same issues, so it's good to see how. Other councils are tackling the issues, that was, that was really good. There were, like, Council Lake was saying, a lot of the presentations were, some were pretty dry, but some, there was, there was good ones about the forestry. Industry and some updates to that, there was. I went to a session about modular homes and how they make them in Thunder Bay, that one was pretty interesting. And just hearing the ministers.
And just hearing the ministers and the provincial leaders speak, that was that was, it's always good to hear their perspective on things.
Great, thanks. I'll summarize for council and maybe Mrs. Khrushchev add anything if we missed something. Yeah, as a mayor of the small town Northern Ontario, I think I was very proud to fact that both, you know, young men get up and did a great presentation along with. Counselors from Shunia as well as Red Lake, Olivia and Vito, as well as Henry is, you know, Henry was a youth fellowship from AMO. That AMO has adopted the program because of our program that we've initiated back in two thousand and eleven with youth on our councils as well as Thomas. Thomas couldn't make it, but I mentored Thomas for last several months. Through my AMO role as an AMO board member and he was excited to come and then the last miss was something changed and his license he had to cancel. But. The idea was that they were talking about the future and you guys addressed it clearly about the youth in our communities and the impact it has. And how this could have changed and how you can make changes. So that's really nice. Obviously, the governance part of it, everybody doesn't want to sit through some of those. Dull and boring presentations, but they're all key aspects to what's happening in Northwest Ontario. Whether it's workplace planning border, the Thunder Bay District Health Unit or Nassau, whatever one of that council, whatever one of the presentation represented. For all of what's happening within our backyards, maybe directly in Marathon, maybe not directly, but it does have an impact on all of us because we do pay levies to a lot of these organizations. We have impact and what how those impacts affect all of us is key. I had an opportunity to attend some different sessions, of course, as my role as the Norma executive vice president. I also had the opportunity to go meet with the ministers the night before and talk about the issues within Northwest Ontario and how they recognize that. That's why we were able to have seven ministers come to Northwest Ontario. To talk about the issues in our in our backyard because it is about our backyard, whether it's coming from Farm Pain, which is the farthest. East of the community, part of Norma, all the way to the Manitoba border. There's thirty seven municipalities that are participating in that organization. And we did hear from our First Nations neighbors, Joe Moses, as well as Vicky Blanchard, did a presentation on on engaging indigenous communities. I had an opportunity to meet with them the night before the presentation to discuss how we can all build communities and build opportunities and partnerships for the future going forward. Then, of course, Friday morning, I I was really excited to have both both student counselors get up and ask questions of the ministers. Then we heard from the ministers also recognize Marathon. About how what a great job we do as as mentoring our youth counselors. So that really goes well and our name gets put out there, but. A lot of networking is key to Norma, of course, you all know that. And I mean, sitting with the table of of people that you haven't seen for a bit are getting updated on their community issues. We all have issues and we all deal through them as best we can. And whether that's through taxation, you know, in social media. Infrastructure. We're lucky, we're a community that doesn't have a lot of bridges and dams, but those communities are really struggling. We have infrastructure problems of our own, of course, but those are things that we can continue to to go to govern with. And that's where our next one will be is with AMO. It was about bringing those delegations to the concerns of what our needs are for the future. So thank you both again for coming and both counselors with her and Lake as well for being here representing the municipality. And Mrs. Khrushchev, if we missed anything, you could certainly highlight what you might have picked up on on this one.
No, I don't think anything else within the conference. Outside of the conference, the day before, I hosted a regional CAOS meeting. So we have a working group that consists of ourselves and Greenstone in the east and then the larger municipalities, Fort Francis Drive and Sulu, Red Lake, Canora in the west. Get together and spend an afternoon and, you know, sharing ideas, challenges, you know, in in running municipalities in twenty twenty four. But one of our action items this year that we took out because we're all facing rising insurance costs that are almost uncontrollable. Is we've established a working group and we're going to write a terms of reference to do a group RFP. To see if we can't find a better rate for insurance if we approach it as a seven communities as opposed to. Each approaching it individually. So we're going to, we started that process, we're going to meet at the end of the month. And we're going to try and issue something before next year's budget here. So a good example of communities getting together and in their form and working together and. You know, hopefully, even if it's not, you know, we know insurance premiums are rising and to rates that are just not sustainable, we can achieve some savings for our budgets for next year.
Appreciate that. And I think it would be appropriate to maybe highlight that to Judy Zizel who looks after LAS for AMO. Because we had that discussion a lot more meaning about the impact on all municipalities throughout Ontario, the insurance rates and how they're really killing us, literally. I mean, we used to pay like a hundred and some thousand, now we're paying close to four hundred thousand and growing each and every year. So, you know, it's a huge amount of cost to our annual budget. Four hundred thousand dollars for insurance is a lot of money. So you can't change it. You have to have it. So it's this reality. So I appreciate that. Look forward, maybe the CEO is sending a little, maybe a memo to the to the LAS through Judy Dizel and to see if there's opportunity to work together. Great, thanks for that. Thanks, everybody. Up next, we got a bylaw, bylaw of twenty seventy seven being a bylaw to set the tax ratios, confirm property classes and. To set tax rate ratios reductions as prescribed to property sub classes for the town of Marathon for the twenty four taxation year. We read it per second, third time as far and finally passed this thirteenth day of May twenty twenty four. Move by. Counselor Wither, same with Counselor Lake. Any questions on that bylaw? Hearing that, I'll call a question on in favor. Gary, thank you. Up next, we have a couple of council who support the question, pressure receiver in town of Culver regarding the proposed amendment to subsection. Two twenty seven sixteen on the Heritage Act. And basically, if you read the bylaw, I get a motion, I'll put it on the floor so we can get their discussions. But council hereby supports the task resolution received by town of Culver, retaining to the proposed amendment of subsection twenty seven sixteen of the Ontario Heritage Act. With respect to removal of listed non designated properties from municipal heritage registers and for that, a copy of the motion be forwarded on to the individuals listed on the original resolution. Move by. Counselor Lake, same with Counselor Suki. Comments on that? It's pretty straightforward in a resolution. There was, whereas. It's just looking at the timelines associated with registering of the properties to be extended for five years from January one twenty twenty five to January one twenty thirty. So they can just be identified through the province. There's a lot more to the resolution, but anybody have any comments on that, Counselor Lake?
Yeah, certainly I would support it for a town that has lots of heritage buildings. I can imagine it'd be a lot of work. And we don't have a single heritage building in that one, so it doesn't impact us at all. But I can imagine down in Southern Ontario, that's a huge burden to municipalities. So it's it's worth that.
Two hundred thirteen directly in Culver. So I mean, obviously, there are older communities, finding.
Because they're not very old, right?
Yeah. We're not an old community there.
But we can support our.
Yeah. Everybody's good with that resolution? Great, thanks. And next one up, we have a motion here that council hereby supports the task resolution received by town of Lincoln, pertaining to the urgent need of increased funding for libraries and museums in Ontario. Further copy of the motion be forwarded on to the originally listed resolution. Move by. Counselor Wither, same with Counselor Lake. Questions on that one? Similar, it's looking for increased funding for libraries. We know our libraries always look for more money. Our museum is always trying to get heritage funds to operate throughout the summer and keep the heat on and lights on. It's a very small budget, but we support them manually. As well as the library. And so anytime we get more monies from each level of government to help us set those costs is great. Any other questions? Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I know when. When Sean Tal and Amy or Lee Hannah was here to present, they mentioned that it's been over twenty five years since the the funding's increased. Has that ever been revisited, like over the twenty five years and they just say no? Or is it just something that hasn't been considered?
I I think probably in the general government, like everything else, it's such a big budget that, you know, those things just slip by and then, you know, it's got to be pushed back. So I think when you see a resolution like this coming forward. It's identifying that libraries and museums need to have increased funding. But the majority of the funding comes back on everything that's a policy, no matter where you live, because we are funding the library, we are funding the museum to the majority of their funds. So I think having some assistance from the provincial government on those two levels would be great. It's just one taxpayer. It doesn't matter how it comes to the table. Any other questions?
No, we support that. Absolutely.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Gary, thank you. Okay, we will be going into a closed meeting today to discuss some items prior to the adjournment of this public meeting. The closed meeting will be talking about proposed pending acquisition, distribution of lands and municipality and local board, labor relations, employee negotiations as well will be discussed in the closed meeting and council that will. Follow this open public meeting. So I will adjourn this open public meeting at the hour four forty PM. Move by Counselor Lake, same with Counselor Wither. All in favor? Great, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.